Our long-term plan is about a couple of key strategic objectives. It's about maintaining and enhancing our infrastructure for, obviously, for the people of Napier. Then there's a focus around economic development and events and tourism because those are key factors. And then, of course, you've got the environment. We're an art deco city and that's, you know, one of the things that sort of stands us apart. And so there's a lot of work which is taking place in terms of preserving the cultural and heritage aspects, but at the same time, we do need to move forward.
This is the Ryan Marketing Show and you're listening to episode 12 of 100. Today I'm joined by CEO of the Napier City Council, Wayne Jack. Great to be here, Wayne.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan.
So my first question's kind of a simple one. What's it like being a CEO of an entire city?
It's a great responsibility and something which I sort of look forward to the challenge every day because no one day is the same. You know, there's just lots of opportunities, lots of projects which we've got on the go all the time. And then, of course, you've also got the challenge of looking after 530 staff as well, as well as an $18 million budget and just over $1.2 billion in assets. So, you know, a lot of responsibility, but it's great to be working with the community and delivering services.
So where have you taken it from? Because this isn't day one for you now. Like from day one till now, what are some of the key successes you've had or things that you look back on with pride?
Yeah, I think if we look back, so I've now been in the job just over two years in terms of where the council's come from, a real focus around customer service, both internal customers and our external customers, and just a real change in how we deal with our customers. For instance, a good example is our building consenting. We're a regulatory authority. We're always going to have to say no to people in terms of when they come in to do building consents. But what we've been doing is working with the team is how you get that message across and give people options so that they can go away going, yeah, okay, I know that I didn't comply with this, but if I look at a couple of these options, I can then get it through. We went through a building consent accreditation and we had a few issues that we had to work through, but we're now fully accredited. And in the way that we're delivering the service, we now get a lot of praise from developers. And so, you know, it's a case of working with the developers early on and helping them achieve their outcomes. And then just in terms of that customer delivery, having a communications team. Arrived here, there was no comms team in place. The previous mayor did all her own media releases and media engagement. And we didn't have a Facebook page. And so now we've got a Facebook page, we've changed the council branding to the Napier Now, which has been hugely successful. So just looking back, all of those things, and then also just the cultural transformation in the staff as well.
Yeah, talk a little bit more about that because it's one thing to have your own vision, but you need to bring a team along with you in order to execute on that vision. How did you go about turning the inside of the council around to your vision for how you wanted to see it delivered to your customers?
Yeah, it was a case of working with the senior leadership team and bringing them all on board and getting them to understand what the vision was, so getting them to own that as well, so that they also become the change agents as well. Because at the end of the day, I can't drive the change completely from the top. You've got to have a team of people delivering that. And so they've been instrumental in that, been working with them. We've done a cultural change program across council. So we've talked to all the staff about where we're going and what the vision is for not only the city, but also for the council. So we've called this program that we're embarking on now Sustainable Excellence. And so all the staff are now talking about that. The staff were involved in the redevelopment of their values. And so they've all been bought into that, they designed them, they own them. We've implemented leadership training for the staff. So we've down to our tier three, so they're all working through a system called Building High Performing Teams. So they understand team dynamics and most importantly, about getting alignment between what they're doing versus what the council's doing and how that delivers outcomes to the city, to the community.
And for those who live in Napier, how would they perceive that change? Like, is there any particular customer touchpoints that that will then flow through to?
Yeah, it's interesting that you use the word touchpoints because that's a saying which I say to all the staff is that you've got to have a lot of touchpoints with your customers. So that we're now getting staff going around saying, I've got to have lots of touchpoints. So it's a good thing to be saying. Yeah, I think the most important thing which people would see coming into Napier City Council is it's a different feel in terms of how they come in and do business with council, just from the simple things in terms of coming into the customer service area that you can do most of your work there before. If you wanted to pay a parking fine, you had to go right down to the basement floor. And if you wanted to do something with dogs, you had to go up to another level. And if you wanted to do building, you had to go to another area. So now you can go to one area. You can do a lot more online. As a good example, when I went for my job interview here, I got a parking ticket and I couldn't pay it. I phoned up, I couldn't pay over the phone, I couldn't give my credit card, I couldn't go onto the website. I had to come in or post a check-in and I was living in Australia at the time. Now you can do all of that, you can go online, pay it, you can do it straight over the phone by credit card. So from a customer perspective, you know, it should be a lot easier to engage with the council, to do business and to get information. So, you know, hopefully what the community is seeing is that local government has this thing saying that council should be business friendly. I could take it further, it should be customer friendly. And so hopefully now people are seeing that it's just a lot easier to do business with the council and they see us a lot more visible out in the community.
And so going back on your journey before Napier City Council, you were based in Melbourne, is that right?
Yeah.
How much of what you were doing there is flowing through? Is there a success blueprint you've got? Or are there particular things that you see are unique to Napier that you found different since taking up the CEO role?
Yeah, and if you think, if you look at local government, I think we all have similar challenges around, you know, community expectations. All our communities expect more and more service in terms of what they want. We all have the same sort of challenges around how we manage our infrastructure. And the main things around that is getting details around what the status of your infrastructure is and then putting asset management plans into it. So we're all pretty similar in that regards, but some do it better than others. And I think there's the opportunity for everyone to work together in a lot more cohesive manner to share that information because a lot of them are doing some great things. I think for me, I've only been in local government now for about six years. Before that, I was working in ministries in Wellington and then before that, 22, 23 years in the New Zealand Navy, which had a big focus on business excellence. A lot of stuff I am doing is around business excellence. But if I look at my time in local government, most of my sort of learnings really came from my time at Lake Macquarie in New South Wales, by Newcastle. And my previous general manager there, I used to think it was quite corny what he used to keep saying, but now I've sort of started saying it to all my staff here. And he says, if you're going to do something, you've got to do it with substance and style. And so now, you know, I've been pushing that out across to all our staff. So particularly when we're building projects, if you're going to do it, let's do it right, do it properly so that people really appreciate it. So for instance, just a simple thing like doing the toilet and shower upgrade at Spriggs Park. You know, so it's not just a toilet block, you know, it's something which people can really stand back and appreciate it and, you know, it's only cost a little bit more. But just the level of community satisfaction that comes from it increases. And so people then are more appreciative of the work that council does. And then obviously they also look after the facility a lot better as well.
Yeah, I've seen that one as walking past on my way to get coffee and, you know, it's a stunning view. So although it's just a functional block, it can have the potential effect if it's not done right to ruin those million dollar views along there. And I guess the same could be said about Marine Parade. Like we've got this massive stunning view. Is there plans ahead to preserve it or make the most of it? Or turn it into something more of maybe what it's historically been known for as a gathering place for...
Well, truly, I think there's the opportunities to enhance what we have there because it's sort of in a lot of parts, a blank canvas. You know, we've got some pretty cool plans around the aquarium, which I'll expand on a little bit later. But in terms of the Marine Parade part, you know, the council's already agreed to the upgrading and enhancement to the War Memorial, which, you know, sort of is one of the anchor points to the parade. So, you know, once again, rather than just to, because we had some seismic issues with the building, so we're addressing that now and we bought forward the project to upgrade it. So we've all linked it in together. But, you know, rather than just, for instance, just doing standard footpathing, which goes in from the Marine Parade walkway into there, you know, we're putting granite down because it makes a statement and it's really going to bring people's attention to that facility. But the biggest project obviously which we've got happening is the big upgrade to the Marine Land, old Marine Land site and the linkage between the sunken gardens through to Marine Land. And so we've just had the designs pretty much finalized last week. Unfortunately, it's come in over budget quite a bit because pricing's changed in the last couple of years from when we started the project. And as a result, council's just signed off on Friday night to an extra 1.2 million into that project. So it's going to be a $7.25 million project, but it's going to be stunning. You know, the skate park will be an international skate park. So we've got some really top international designers working on that. And just the connection through will really tell a story about Hawke's Bay. So there'll be, you know, places for people to sit and just reflect on Hawke's Bay and look at some great statues, monuments in that area, as well as some water play areas for kids to walk in. So it's going to be quite impressive. So that'll really be another point to Marine Parade. At the other end, you know, we did the pump track and that's getting huge amount of use and...
It's packed with kids until almost, almost until the sun's gone down, there are kids there.
But, you know, that's another example. So, you know, we had an idea of doing that when I arrived and we sort of looked at Marine Parade as a bookcase. And so if you put these things as bookings, that's how we sort of worked it. But yeah, it's another thing. We could have just done a standard sort of pump track. But, you know, we looked to see around the world what's some of the best and that's actually copied off a French design.
And so how do you then go about balancing the need to move forward and do those types of transformation projects with the need to preserve some of the things we've already got?
Yeah. Well, that's what, if you, if you look at our long-term plan, that's exactly what our long-term plan talks about. So our long-term plan is about a couple of key strategic objectives. It's about maintaining and enhancing our infrastructure for, obviously, for the people of Napier. Then there's a focus around economic development and events and tourism because those are key factors. And then, of course, you've got the environment. We're an art deco city and that's, you know, one of the things that sort of stands us apart. And so there's a lot of work which is taking place in terms of preserving the cultural and heritage aspects, but at the same time, we do need to move forward. And I think a really good example of a city that does that is Melbourne. You don't want to copy the old because once you start copying the old, it just doesn't do it justice at all and it looks tacky. So when we do something new, you've got to look at how that integrates. And so that's where we sort of challenge developers that when they're doing developments and particularly around the CBD area, that it's that outward looking part that has got to be quite spectacular because if you try and do it cheap, then it starts to bring down the art deco part. So we're doing a lot of work around the city vision. And so there's been a lot of work. So that started off as a master plan for the CBD, but it's now morphed into a city vision which connects the CBD through to Ahururi because those are sort of two integral areas.
So for those developers or even business owners wanting to extend what they're offering or their building space, it's really a balancing it between preserving what's there and extending with what the best of new is and trying to get that balance right without trying to just replicate the historical nature that's already there.
Yeah.
So going around to Ahururi and that part in between, there seems to be quite a lot of activity with the port, which is great for our exporters. How does that then interplay with the city and the residents around this area? Is it a good thing? Or how do we, how do we balance what's going on there with the industrial side of things?
Yeah, so it's about integrating the port activity into Ahururi. So we're working on a plan to take the trucks off Marine Parade. And so that'll come through in the next month or so. You'll see a lot of work which will happen around Marine Parade, which will put some traffic calming measures into that, which will move the trucks off. So that's naturally going to push them down the state highways and then around through Ahururi. So we've been working with the Ahururi Business Association and residents around there. And it's about how you just integrate it. So by changing a couple of things down there in terms of how people cross the roads, that can work quite well. So a lot of the times it's about consultation with community and about getting them to understand what the pressing needs are. In the day, we're a port city. Without the port, you know, we're not going to get our exports out. And Hawke's Bay's doing extremely well at the moment because of water culture and pip fruit, where the rest of the country is struggling with dairy. And it's quite funny, isn't it, how just a couple of years ago, everyone said Hawke's Bay's a basket case and it's all changed around.
How times change.
How times change very quickly.
So let's now talk about some of the services that maybe people don't even think about on a daily basis because all of them are working. And it would only be if one of those broke that they would start thinking, hey, what's going on here? What are some of the things that a lot of those 500 people that are working for the council are looking after on a daily basis?
Yeah, well, the main ones are obviously around our three waters would be sort of the key ones, which people don't really see because they're all underground, most of them are underground. You don't really see them. So that's your fresh water, your sewage and your storm water. And so we're doing a lot of work around that. The CBD, for instance, was an interesting one which we started. We're partway through that project. We know that there's an issue at times during heavy rainfall around flooding in the CBD. And so there's been a lot of testing around the capacity of the storm water. And so there's been a lot of work in terms of the upgrading. And at the same time as we're upgrading the storm water, we've also been upgrading the roading and the footpath in the CBD. So that's why you've seen changes to the road layout and to the footpath to make it a bit more modern and a bit more pedestrian friendly. So a lot of work is taking place around storm water around the city. Napier is low line, 85% of our storm water is pumped, actually has to be physically pumped. And people don't really understand the pressures that that place is on a network. And so when you have a capacity issue in one part, it can quickly cause problems elsewhere. And so Napier can flood very, very quickly. So we're doing a lot of work around that, doing some work around Tarradale at the moment. So we've just delayed the project just to get a little bit more modeling in place, just to work out what's the right network to have for Tarradale because obviously it's an expensive project and you want to get it right. But, you know, storm water is a challenge. You know, we did what we thought was quite an innovative thing in putting up a viewing platform over a drain. Just because, once again, Marine Parade, you know, Marine Parade's a visible point. That drain would have been viewable from the War Memorial. So we thought, let's put a platform across. But unfortunately, in any place, you get a little bit of knockers. But in general, people now that go to it really appreciate what it's done. So Three Waters is an area that we do, obviously roads is another key one. And, you know, Napier's got a pretty good roading network. And what we're trying to do now with our roading network is make the car the secondary form of transport and really push for that cycle and pedestrian becomes the primary mode of transport. So it takes a bit of a change in thinking in terms of your roading engineers. And so we're doing some work around the CBD, around that.
So you're really leading the behaviour there by making it easier to be a cyclist than a car driver in particular areas with the hope and expectation that the behaviour will then follow.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if you think back, you know, quite a few years, you know, when I was growing up here as a kid, we all just about biked to school. Now kids don't bike to school, they all get dropped off by their parents and that causes problems around obesity and health issues and that. And of course, traffic issues. But if we can create a cycling network that makes it easy for people to get around, then we can start to take people back to the push bike as a viable means of transportation. And of course, the big thing, you know, with Hawke's Bay is that we've got some fantastic trails. People come here now just for the trails. So from a tourism perspective, it's huge. And a lot of people that come here said, you know, that we could be exactly like the Netherlands and Denmark in that in terms of a cycling city. So it's just how you do your roading work to support that.
In terms of cities around New Zealand that are doing really good things right at the moment that maybe as a Napier resident, we aren't aware of, are there things you're taking as best practice from somewhere else and importing into Napier?
Yeah, we, we do look around. You know, so we're sort of obviously keeping a close eye on Christchurch in terms of how they're going through their rebuilding process because their CBD is not going to be like the CBD they had before. It's going to completely change. So we do look around New Zealand. We also look overseas and in fact, a lot of our ideas are coming from overseas. So for instance, in the next two weeks, we've got the seawalls painting which is going to take place. And so that's an idea that we got from overseas. So a lot of the stuff in our city vision, we're actually taking from around the world and saying, okay, what are some of the cities doing to make their city a really livable city that people just want to embrace? And that's what's coming through when we just did our survey around net promoter score, around how people perceive Napier as a place that they want to promote.
So yeah, just before the interview, you were taking me through some of these stats. So for the audience out there, what are, what are some of the things that, you know, you've just briefly shown me that really stand out in terms of the ratings that your customers have given you?
Yeah, so, I mean, as I mentioned to you before, what we do on an annual basis is we do an NRB survey just to check what the level of satisfaction is with our service delivery. And that gets reported in an annual report. But one of the big components it misses is the level of importance. So how important do people perceive the service to be? We've just completed a survey on that and we came out quite well, 7.2 out of 10. So that says that in general, you know, most of the people are pretty pleased with the service that they receive and they consider it to be quite important. Couple of areas for us to focus on and so we're just working through those issues now. And what it allows us to do is to look at some strategies in terms of how we can address them and try and bring them up another level. And so we'll take those options to council and then build them into the annual plan. So there's a couple of things around MTG, swimming pools and parking that we'll consider. But the one which was, you know, quite interesting and I think really great just to show in terms of what's happening in Napier is the net promoter score came out at 61%. And when you look at some businesses, I think Local Government New Zealand did a net promoter score last year in terms of their survey and they came out at minus 30%. So 61%. So when the people doing the survey actually questioned 400 people and said, you know, what can our council be doing to, you know, improve life in Napier? There wasn't really a lot of issues. So we're obviously touching the right things and doing the right thing. So yeah, it's a pretty good, I think it gives a good indication that we're on the right track.
For the plans you put in place, is there, I guess there are lag time. Do you, are you working on things that will only come to fruition, you know, multiple years from now? Or are there things that, you know, you can work on now and know that you'll see out before your contracts due for, when you're around 2018? Are you doing things for your successor? Or is it you're really focused on what you can deliver for your time here?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of things that, a lot of the projects that take place within local government do take a number of years to build because there's a lot of consultation. You have to go through a lot of business cases, design and stuff. So they are long lead time projects. A lot of the stuff we're doing around the city vision is sort of that short to medium term. So one of the things that we are trying in as a council is so we've got council on board. So to take a little bit of a risk and to try, to try things is a bit of a tester. So a bit of a taster with the community, see what they think. If it works, then we'll actually do it as a permanent system. So for instance, you know, we dropped in some oversized planter boxes which people can sit in in Tennyson Street and we're getting, using that to get feedback. We did the pop-up displays and stalls down Market Street with wifi, put some furniture out, get some ideas in terms of does that work? And we'll do the same with Marine Parade. So we'll do some semi-permanent structures, see if they work, get some feedback. And if they do, then we'll make it permanent. So I think there's been a bit of a change in terms of how council works. You know, councils can generally be a bit risk averse. But I think it's a case of if the community knows that we're just prepared to try things, we're going to listen to you. It's actually, I think the community are actually a lot more engaging that way as well.
So it sounds like you've taken some of those enterprise sized things like product development, where you be agile around what you deliver to your customer and deliver in small chunks, see what they think, get the feedback and then evolve it before the big launch or the big investment.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we did exactly the same with our dog obedience park. So we tried a little one, got some huge feedback. And so then we thought, right, so now we've got two around the city and they're getting lots of good use and good feedback. So yeah, in the day, we are sort of delivering products and that to the community. But you don't want to go through a whole five, 10-year process before something comes out. People want to see things happening on a regular sort of basis.
It's balancing that, taking the leadership and knowing what's right for the city versus listening to the residents.
Yeah, and then when you don't get it right, just put your hand up. Yeah, we tried it, didn't work. It's, we've learned, move on.
And before we close off the interview, what are some of the biggest challenges with central government or externalities that you're having to deal with that are just, you know, part of life? If they weren't yet there or if they were different, things would be a lot easier.
It's just, we obviously have a lot of legislation that we have to comply with. And so a lot of the times, you know, when people are doing like a licensing and building consent, they're blaming council. But it's really just us having to enforce a whole lot of legislation. And so, you know, there's challenges in working with that. And so I think it's just a case of working with central government. So when they're going through reviews and that of legislation, to work with them and see what's a better way to do things. We've got quite a close relationship with central government because we've obviously got this group called an intersexual group, which has been established in Hawke's Bay, which is a bit of a first really in terms of how it's trying to deliver services.
What is that, intersexual group? What's that, what do they do?
Yeah, it's very hard to explain. Basically, it's just about every central, local government, EWE, agency in Hawke's Bay who come together and we're looking at trying to see how we can deliver services, outcomes in a more coordinated way. Because at the end of the day, we're all trying to do a similar sort of thing, but we all go off in different directions at times for central government to take a different path. And so, for instance, driver licensing was a key project that we had. And so it was about how can we coordinate our delivery in a more integrated manner to try and achieve better outcomes? And so that, that group is now starting to get a little bit more traction. We're just finishing off doing a strategy for that. So we've been working with central governments and so we've had meetings with ministers about what the outcomes and focuses are for that group. But we need more support from central government in terms of a bit more latitude around central government and how they, how those government agencies use their funding. And so government, we've been working with government and so they're quite keen on it. And then we're doing a lot of work in our recent economic development strategy. And I think when that comes out in March, it'll have a number of really good action points which people can see that, you know, this is the way that Hawke's Bay needs to go for its future.
And I think that's a really great note to end on. Thank you very much for your time, Wayne. I've certainly learnt a lot about how council operates and also, you know, how you brought your vision to bear within the council. So thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. Didn't tell you about my aquarium project?
We can add it in.
My aquarium ones, we're quite excited. A lot of people I tell about it, a lot more people get really excited about it. So basically what's happening at the moment is we are entering into a MOU with Waikato University. So Waikato do a lot of research and programs around marine science. And we're just entering into a partnership with Monterey Aquarium.
Was that Miami or?
California, just out of LA. And so, so basically I went to Monterey, been there twice now. Just went here last year on holiday and met with some of their staff. So Monterey is renowned for the work it does in conservation and marine science. But when you go there, it's just mind blowing, brilliant. And I use my wife as a good example because she gets bored at these things pretty quick. We went there for a visit and after three hours, she said, this place is really cool. And I said, man, it's taken you three hours to say anything? Because she was just blown away. It's really interactive for kids. It's got some wonderful displays, but you know, it's just, there's something there for everyone. And so what we're wanting to do is enter into this partnership with Monterey and Waikato and develop these marine science. and develop these marine science programs, marine sustainability. And so the vision is every kid in New Zealand comes to the National Aquarium of New Zealand, because that's the other thing too, it's the National Aquarium of New Zealand, but we don't get any support from government. So every kid comes here to learn about marine sustainability as part of their school curriculum. So we've already had talks to a couple of principals and they can see how this can all work quite nicely. And then of course, it's got some flow-on effects. So if we expand the aquarium and take it further down the parade, put some more tanks in, some more interactive displays for kids, a lot more research capability, then it's got a tourist and economic flow on.
Which can then self-fund the rest of it?
Absolutely. And so, you know, if you use Monterey as an example, 2 million people a year go to that aquarium, we get about 250,000. So if we can get that up to half a million, three quarters of a million, you know, that's a huge economic benefit to the region. And the real beauty of it too is that, you know, the likes of Andy Lowe and Julian Roberts are doing some great work out at Cape Kidnappers. And so what it does is it creates this land to sea connection. So, so when people come here, they can do the whole journey.
So then you've got a whole story around it. And what's great about it is you're just tweaking existing assets rather than placing a major bit in a different direction.
So all we're doing is taking a facility that we currently have, already does a bit of research. You know, we already have a Tuatara breeding program. People don't know that we actually run a Kiwi breeding program. But we want to make it a lot more visible and so that'll become part of an upmarket tourist package as well. But the whole thing around expanding the aquarium is quite exciting because then it just becomes a real focus point. So Marine Land's gone, this is where people now want to go to see what's happening in the marine environment. And so the aquarium, when you talk to government, so the National Aquarium gets some support from them. And we've already had talked to a couple of potential benefactors to it and just the level of excitement around it's huge. So we've got to start doing some analysis on that. And Waikato University have got a number of PhD students which have been working around the world in aquariums. And so they're going to give us a hand to write the business case for it. So that's really exciting.
That is great. Particularly because it is the national version of it and it's right here.
Yeah, but no one knows, you know, like people think, you know, I haven't been to Kellytaw in years, but people say it's, you know, it's overpriced and it's not that great, but we're the National Aquarium, so let's play on that.
Yeah. Good, I'll add that a little bit in there.
Sounds pretty cool.
If you liked this episode, remember to subscribe for free on iTunes. Simply search for The Ryan Marketing Show in the iTunes store.